The is so it's November 10th, 2020. Eric, would you say the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment, anybody in the public, which is to address the commission on a non agenda item. Seeing that will move right along. Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes? Is that a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
You have a motion to?
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. All, excellent. Commissioner Paul seconds it all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, commission comments and committee reports.
I have none.
I have a juvenile correction Zoom meeting Thursday at 2 o'clock.
I might make one comment. I know there's starting to be the drive for United Way and Atchison. And then a lot of people might have the opportunity to give a few dollars out of each check to support United Way. It's a good way of doing it. I'm sure our human resource department, we talked to people that are employed by the county and people who are listening to the public, if you have an opportunity to give us even a small amount, makes a difference. So that's all I have. Okay. Justin, Noel, public works director, you're on first.
Okay, good afternoon. What I have for you this afternoon is a proposed KDOT KL BIP bridge replacement project that we have a proposal from Husker Steel to replace that bridge for $131,377. And I'm seeking your review and approval.
Justin, why, what was the difference between the 100, I believe it's 106 that we approved already and this one?
It was, yep. Steel prices have gone up.
Okay, so that was basically an old bid that we were working off of.
It was, yeah, we were working off a bid from early 2019 when it was originally approved. So that's, that's the reasoning for the revision.
And on this one, it is going to be kind of time sensitive when this is put in versus the other bridge because it's going to basically create an island.
It is. You're correct. Yep, we've got another KDOT cost share bridge program replacement that I just was actually informed this morning. The contractor hopes to start in December. So.
Oh, earlier. Thank you. Good.
Yep. So they asked if that was okay. We are setting up a pre-construction meeting for that. So yeah, hopefully they'll, hopefully they'll be done by, you know, it's probably going to be summer before they're done, but but yeah, if they can get started and get that one done and then we can, if we can get this one approved and under contract by next year, so we don't lose that funding.
Sure, entertain a motion to enter into a purchase order with Norfolk Contracting, also known as Husker Steel for bridge replacement F dot O dash 12 point four, $131,377. Do I have a motion?
Also move.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. Okay, Justin.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Justin?
Yes, sir.
I forgot to tell you this morning, I had a gentleman tell me that there's been a bunch of stop signs that have been ran over basically north and west of Effingham. So you might send somebody out to check that out. Also, there's a dead end road on, it'd be Dickinson and 286 where it jogs over. There's a dead end placard or board that's been pushed into the ditch. So kids have been joyriding or something, or I blame it on kids, but whoever's been joyriding and and you might check some of those stop signs. And I think it went clear out. They also mentioned a stop sign on Bourbon Road and well, the paved road right south of me, west of Spielman Fertilizer. On Bourbon Road.
Okay, yeah, we will definitely get to that. Thank you for letting me know.
We also have the MLU for low water crossings.
Yes, sir. Yep, I need to talk with Mr. Henderson a little bit more on that.
We talked for a few minutes about it, but I think we need a little more time for us to go over it.
Okay, so delay that till next week. Okay.
Please.
Yep, that was all I had for today.
Was there a bid opening?
There is. Michelle?
I have that for you. I have four different sealed bids. The first one I'm going to open is from Marlon Jane. Sorry, I don't normally do these, so I'm kind of confused. The proposal says 197,0078 at an interest rate of 2.80%, which would be an annual payment of $42,787.45 annually. Or it would be $21,256.98 semi-annually. What else do you need off of this, Justin?
I think the, I think the interest rate is most important.
Yeah. We've, we've got the, I think we've got the payments figured, so as far as what we, what we have available.
This one's going to be from the Union State Bank, Bank of Atchison. The interest rate is 2.75%. And then did you want the annual payment, semi-annual payment? They only did semi-annual.
Sure.
The semi-annual would be 21,000, 064.63. And it says the payments may change upon final lease documentation. So they gave us like a schedule or something. The third one is from GN Bank out of Horton. The interest rate on this one is 2.23%.
The suspense is killing me.
Very, well, semi-annual payment of $20,937. And then it would be due January 15th and July 15th, but it can be changed to best fit the client preference. And then there would be an additional filing, lien filing fee estimated at $12.50.
Sorry, is there any more?
Yeah, I have one more. Sorry, I'm slow. I'm trying to keep it all on track because I can't take notes as I'm doing it. This one is from Exchange Bank. And the interest rate on this one is 2.94% with a semi-annual payment of $21,336.04. And it would be due February and July. And of course, Justin, I will scan all of these in once the meeting is completely over and get them over to you.
Okay.
Do you want to take action now? Do you want to review them?
I, I think it seems, seems apparent to me that GN is the lowest interest rate, the lowest payment. Seems seems like a the way to go. But.
Sure, entertain a motion to approve. Is it GN Bank?
GN, yep.
For interest rate of 2.23%. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept that bid.
Over second.
I think I know where this is, is going and I have the same questions, but.
Well, that's, that's the question. Well, I'll second it. I'll second of our discussion purposes. And let's discuss it.
I'll say it before Bill does. Is out of County Bank? Is that your concern, Bill? Is?
Yes.
Do we have policies or procedures or precedent that we keep it in county?
We do.
I, I don't know. I, we've, go ahead, Pat.
We have done business with them before. They were the successful bidder on a, a different project. I don't remember which one that was, but some other equipment. There is no, as far as, there's no policy that I'm aware of, although I guess it would be up to you.
My concern is it's not even close.
Yeah.
They are. They're, they're in Holt, or in Horton. They're in Horton.
I think he means the, the bid isn't even closer. The interest rate isn't close.
I know our heart is. It's pretty close.
How much difference, how much difference was there between the GN and the Bank of Atchison? I think Bank of Atchison was the second lowest interest rate.
Half a percent.
Yep.
Fifty some basis points, 52 basis points.
I, that's, it's up to you guys. I, I understand.
A person like, I'd personally like to keep it local, but we're not spending my money. We're spending taxpayers' money, so I don't know.
Any more discussion? I assume you're ready to vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Passes two, all pause, same side.
Aye.
Passes two to one. Commissioner Paul on the negative.
Well, I think it's definitely worth the discussion and the thought to keep it in county, but that's where my vote went.
I was more interested in what the actual dollar amount was. How much could we save over the, I presume it was five years? The half percent, what would that figure in the dollars?
The thing, there's been a motion in a
It's already been voted on.
It's passed.
If you want to revisit it, we can. Let's revisit it, Bill. A half a percent's a lot of money.
That's, I'm fine with it. Go ahead.
Okay, moving right along. Justin, do you have anything else?
No, sir.
Okay.
You have anything to add?
I, that's I can think of. Wes, would you, we're going to talk about the payment to 34 grant applications that we're going to try to authorize payment to today. Do you want to put the list on the screen, Wes?
I sure can. Okay, before you see 34 grant applications for our, our Spark Business and Nonprofit Grants, these are just the first 34 applicants that we have gotten the paperwork for and got everything completed and organized for our audit. And so as you see before you, you can see the amounts of, or the name of the business, along with the amounts of the grants that are approved to be paid. Unfortunately, we did have three businesses that could not back up with documentation, their grant request. And you see those three right there, there and there. So Erin Merchant was unable to back up her grant request with documentation. The Hair Loft, after review of documentation, they requested 5,000, or they were awarded 5,000, but we could only back up a documentation of the 433470. And SW Music was supposed to be a $2,000 grant and we could only back that up to $1,650.68. The rest of the 34, 35, sorry, total were approved and the documentation was there to back up the request. So it's a grand total of this first payout. This isn't all of them, but the first payout of 491,361.63. And by Tuesday of next week, we should have more of the, of the grant requests before you to, to do a second payout. We will have some that will, will not be able to give us documentation, all of their documentation until close to the middle of December, for those that are still receiving invoices for COVID expenses. And those will be the middle of December before we pay those out. But all of them will be paid out and documentation received prior to December 30th. And I may have scrolled too fast. So if you didn't see something, let me know. Do you have any questions on those? I do see a typo on this document. Right here, number 34, Wheatland Contracting, the commission approved them for 50,000, not 15,000. So on the award letter that you guys will sign, it actually says 5,000, not, not 15.
Wes?
Yes.
Did Wheatland Contracting go from 30 to 15 during our?
Maybe 15 is correct. Let me pull.
I believe 15 is correct.
Okay. So that is correct then. Sorry if you hear construction noises in the background. We're under construction out here.
I have no further questions.
Okay, well, with your food, I will put these in for payments. We'll put them in the system today and the checks will cut on Thursday this week, which is the 12th.
When do the commissioners have to sign the selecter payment register? Or when will that be ready for the commissioners to sign?
So today, at the clerk's office, you will be able to stop there and those documents that I sent, because it's broke out per grant awardee, there'll be a document there that you'll sign. And then also the payment register, which is what you always sign after every account's payable run. You'll have to sign that also, which Melissa will send that out.
Well, will it be at the courthouse in a paper form for us to sign?
Yes.
Like normal? All right.
Are you done looking at this document? You want me to scroll down or?
Is that a new document? What's down at the lower right? Looks like a handwritten document.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Well, it's all of a sudden in a small thing, it looks like a a document scrolling that is in handwritten form. That's it's a tiny one down here. I don't know what's going on. All of a sudden I can't go into see everybody at once and I don't know whether I can't go to grid. Grid, there we go.
Apparently I mistyped Palucci's. I saw the wrong. I'll fix that. So.
Is Jack no longer with us?
Apparently he is not.
I wonder if it's been so quiet. I guess we will have to wait for a few minutes until he gets back on or and it's not just this country internet. I think that's the second time I've said that today.
It is the second time you said that today. I'm glad yours is working correctly.
It can be working correctly and I still don't know what I'm looking at.
That can happen also.
Still don't know what that was. It looked like a handwritten document scrolling down here and I have no idea where, where that came from. It's gone now.
I don't know what it would have been either. Well, while we're waiting for him to get back on, I've emailed all three of you a rough draft news release that we're going to send out stating the changes at the courthouse to limit traffic, not close the courthouse, but to limit traffic and gathering in the hallways to help stop the spread of COVID and keep our offices running. I'm still waiting on a response back from the courts for that, for that document. And the sheriff is also adding some additional list to the section that's already on there for that. But we'll be able to release that news release today to go into effect on Thursday, because we're closed tomorrow for Veterans Day. But basically what it is, is it's restricting to customers or to citizens per, at each office per time. So we don't have five people in a very small area unable to social distance or more. And to stop, make it to where we're able to social distance in the hallways while waiting also. And then we're encouraging people to call and make appointments because that would take priority over walk-in traffic just to help reduce the spread of COVID. We're up to 620 cases in the county and I haven't been able to talk to the health officer today, but I'm sure we're above that number. That was as of Friday, 620 cases.
When is the last time you posted to the commissioners? The, is that going to come out today or seems like it's been a while since I've gotten a report.
It has been a little bit. I have not remembered to email those to you, but I'll get on that. I apologize. Yeah, Friday was the last released date. It was 620.
That's scary.
I'm sorry for disappearing. I don't know what happened. My computer must have taken a break. So are we still with the the Spark grants, Wes?
So we might have started talking about limiting traffic to the courthouse. We were waiting for you to jump back on.
So we need a motion to approve the 35 grants as presented. I know one of the questions is that what if some of these people provide additional documentation? Will we reconsider?
That is completely up to the commission and if you'll do that or not. Marcus, who went through all of this, all the documentation from all of the businesses, those that he had questions with, he reached back out to and contacted them to get additional additional paperwork of those three, they are more than welcome to come, talk to the commission and then it will be up to up to the commission to decide whether to award the, the full amount or not. This is all subject to an audit. So therefore, if you would choose to award the full grants when we don't have documentation to, to prove that they expended that amount of money, then it's county responsibility to, to refund if if we don't pass.
So without the proper documentation. So without the proper documentation, it's, it's going to be as it stands. If the proper documentation would show up, it needs to show up through Mark Paulson.
He's a show, you know, spark emailer dropped off at the county courthouse.
I think there's been enough time spent on the sparks. I say lock those figures in and move forward.
And the chair, we entertain a motion to approve the expenditures as presented.
Also move.
To move by, seconded by Commissioner Paul. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I assume you're ready to vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. Wes Lantern, you want to continue with what you're talking about for us?
So yes, we, we discussed limiting traffic to the courthouse, not closing the courthouse to the public, but limiting. We're going through the news release, getting it ready to release today. Basically what the news release is going to say is we're going to limit two people, two customers, two citizens per office at a time. Instead of people waiting in the hallways or in those offices and unable to social distance, we're going to request that they, they wait in their car out and outside of the courthouse. And then once an opening comes available, we will let them know that they can come on in. We're also suggesting appointments. So if you have business at the courthouse, if you would schedule an appointment prior to showing up to the courthouse, that would give you priority over walk-in traffic. With the news release, we're also explaining every possible way to conduct business with the county remotely per office, which I've emailed all three of you, the rough draft that we would send out. But way to get information out to the public of how to remotely deal with the courthouse, deal with the county government to reduce traffic. We're currently up to, as of Friday, we're up to 620 cases in Ashland County, 87 of those active. And I'm sure, I haven't been in touch with the health officer a day, but I'm sure we're up from that number from over the weekend.
So just like, if you would be a, on jury duty, you would just go in and tell them you're on jury duty. You don't need an appointment or any other phone call or anything or?
So I'm waiting back from the courts. I just had a few things typed in there for them. I'm waiting back for the courts and Donna actually called me just a few minutes ago. While we were already on this commission meeting to see what exactly the courts would like to do. What, what they would like to have put on this news release. So that's why I said it's a rough draft because I'm still waiting for them. And Jack, the sheriff Lori just emailed me what he would like for his section of the news release.
And so we discussed this quite, about this flying. I'd like to have, I'd like to have someone motion that we should approve the mitigation plan for, it'll be effective when, Wes?
We will release it and we will release it today, but since our offices are closed tomorrow for Veterans Day, it wouldn't actually go into effect until Thursday morning, which would be the 12th.
So the chairman, okay, the motion to approve the, the new litigation program for COVID-19, the courthouse, effective November 12th. Do I have a motion?
I show move, Mr. Chairman.
Move by Commissioner Paul, I have a second.
All second, but I want discussion.
Obviously, we always have discussion up in the second. Any, any further discussion?
Just looking at this, how, how do we, I mean, we're approving the document, but it's a rough draft. I mean, my thing is more on, we're, we're actually approving here.
Yeah, the only thing that's going to change on that rough draft is courts, which you don't have any control over.
And the sheriffs in here?
The, the sheriff's office would be the only other one, which elected official controls his own office.
True, true. I was just kind of just trying to wrap my head around that portion of it. What it, you know, what the document could change into. I know it's.
Correct.
No.
Yeah, the only thing that's going to change is the district court and sheriff's office.
Okay.
Any further discussion? During, assume you're ready to vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. Okay, I have one more. I got a purchase order from Ashland Senior Village to KG, AJ Cool for a replacement of two tumble dryers that are at least 20 years old. That's, that's the best we can determine. These dryers are going to be installed and delivered to the Ashland Senior Village. The total of the dryers is $10,117.80. The freight is $500 and install is $1,260.70 or total 11,878.50. The chair would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
It's been moved by Mr. Hall. Seconded by.
Seconded.
Seconded by.
Seconded.
All those, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Passes three to zero. Pat Henderson?
I just think you should point out that as there was discussion this morning, that the, this isn't going through the regular bidding process because there is a, a bit of an exigency to get it done. And there's also the offer, that several offers were solicited and the low offer expires before the time that you could go through the regular bidding process. And so that's the reason $10,000 is generally that limit and this is just above that. And the, I think the, the request from Senior Village was to, to go ahead with the, with the purchase because of the timeframe involved. That's all.
Thank you, Pat. Anything else under good business? Nobody has? I think I've covered the end of all the things we had. We're now going to move into old business and we, the board of county commissioners are the, the canvassers for the election. And we met yesterday and we approved the ballots and I've approved all of, all the things with the election. And we recessed until the day so that the clerk and the election officials could insert the votes for a final tally. So I, I'd make a motion to come out of recess and move back into the canvassing of the election. Do I have a motion to do that?
Also move.
So moved by Commissioner Hall, seconded by, seconded by Commissioner Paul. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, Michelle, you're on and Pat, you're on. Michelle, her. Herschins.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
You hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. I have, um, up on the shared screen, Pat has put up the abstract that we have. The abstract is 21 pages long because we had so many write-ins this year. But we do have some final numbers. I have emailed those to everyone along with the summary of the general election. We ended up with 7,523 voters, which is just a little over 62% turnout. So we did get the 125 counted and added to the abstract. So all of the numbers on the abstract are final. Did anyone have any questions? Do we need to scroll through the?
Yes, on the public, it's damage. Scroll through. I don't know, Mickey Mouse, I got one vote this.
Yeah, Mickey's still one of the favorites, but I just don't know that he's ever going to really win. But we do have to take every one of them seriously and write them down. So there's your judges. And I believe the special question's on there as well.
Michelle, do you need our original signatures on this?
I would like the original signatures on this since this is archived.
Okay, do you have that word document that you showed, that you showed us? Give kind of a summary.
I think Mr. Henderson's going to put that up next.
Can you, can you see that?
Yes.
So did anyone have any questions or concerns about the election?
Well, here it is, Michelle.
I don't either.
I'd like to congratulate the newly elected people and the ones that got re-elected.
The chair would entertain a motion to accept the election, to certify the election as presented by the election officer and the election staff. Do I have a motion?
I show move.
It's a move by Commissioner Paul, seconded by Commissioner Hall. Any further discussion? I just commented, this was a, this was an outstanding job that this crew did because it was a wild election, even an accident, Karen, so. Thanks to everybody who participated in the vote.
Exactly.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Passes three to zero. We have an election certification.
Very good. I will have the documents in the office. If you guys come by the courthouse, you can call me. I'll be more than happy to bring it out to you for signatures.
Yeah, I'll be up there today sometime, Michelle.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. I do want to ask too, there was a letter that was placed on the agenda for the project concern.
I'm sorry, I missed that on the.
Agenda.
Yeah, and then just we'll go back to that. We're going to send a letter of support, a project concern for a grant they're applying for. Has everybody had a chance to review that? I would call for a motion to approve letters to part.
I show move, Mr. Chairman.
A move by Commissioner Paul.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Hall. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 We're going to have executive session. I would make a motion of the board accounting commissioner, we assessed the executive session at 1:47. 1:47 PM, discuss personal manager of non-elective personnel is allowed by KSA 75-4319B1. And the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. The executive session will be conducted at break, the Zoom meeting platform. Board comes out of session at a half hour, so 2:00, 2:17 PM. Those present in the meeting will be commissioners, county councilor Pat Henderson, HR director Gene Madison, and Pinky House. So I have a motion, do I have a second? And seconded by Commissioner Hall. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. We're going to have executive session, just to visit. Okay, county councillor updates. Okay, you have nothing? Public comment? Anybody have a public comment? Hearing none, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Move by Eric Hall, seconded by Commissioner Hall. At 1:27. That's correct, Bill. Second, are you? Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, I screen there to vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Yeah, next week, same bet time, same bet channel.